This is our Board of Commissioner regular meeting, December 7th, 2023. We will open this meeting at 7:00 PM. First item is roll call. Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Hall?
Present.
Commissioner Johnson?
Present.
Vice Mayor Butler? Mayor Anderson?
Item number three, prayer and pledge. Commissioner Johnson?
Let's pray, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Lord, we thank you for all your many blessings of life. Lord, we ask you to be with us as we make the decisions for the city this evening. We ask that each and every one of us that make these decisions take into consideration what's good for the community as a whole. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number four is mayor's comments. I just want to welcome everyone tonight, and we've got some special guests in the audience, and I'm excited for what's to come. Thank you, everyone at home, for watching, and everyone who's here for being here tonight. Okay, and before we approve the agenda, I need to make an addition if it's so moved I need to add 11G as resolution 77-23, a resolution authorizing the city manager to engage an engineering firm for design and engineering services for parking spaces and a sidewalk at Triangle Historical Village.
Mayor, are we removing F?
That's different. It's a different item.
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. So, thank you. I thought, anyway, okay, I thought that was the other engineering. So, item number F, since that is a discussion item, and Ethan is not able to be here with us tonight, I also ask that item F, since it is just discussion only, be removed so that he can add it, so that Ethan, our city planner, can add it back at a later date for discussion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Item number six is citizens' comments.
We have none tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Item number seven is public announcements, awards, and recognition. A is city events.
Good evening. Just want to recap on this past weekend. On Saturday, we had our Christmas parade. It was a little rainy, but we had a great turnout. Want to thank all the staff, Public Works, police, and fire, everyone that helped with the parade. And then later on that day, at the Historical Village, there was an event there as well with pictures with Santa caroling and tours out there. And then later on that evening, we had our Christmas tree lighting here at City Hall, and it was a great time. We had several people that came out for that. So, just want to thank everyone for coming out for all the events over this past weekend. And just, we're announcing our events for next year, and our next event, which will be at Bowie Park, which is the Easter egg hunt on March the 16th. These events that are listed right here are set in stone, and we plan on adding additional events throughout the year as well. That's all I have right now, Mayor.
Our next item, item 7B, is recognition of Roger and Holly Manley. Would y'all please come forward? And Mark Sutton, would you like to come say a few words on behalf of the police department?
Richard, I'm going to get you to get a picture.
After you say a few words, and then I get to say my words, then we'll get a picture of everybody with you.
All right. Lord, I appreciate tonight. Honor and Roger and Holly is a grand citizen of our community. What they do for people every day is seen by a lot of people, but what they've done in the background, a lot of people don't know about. They've been huge, huge supporters of our Shop With a Cop program as long as it's been in existence. Not only does he donate multiple items, important items, to us, but he actually comes up on the third and cooks all day. It's something special to him, something special to me, and I just want to tell him thank you from the bottom of my heart for everything that you've done, not only for the city, but for our charity organization.
Would you two like to say anything before I begin?
No.
Okay. All right. So, on behalf of the city of Fairview, the citizens of Fairview, myself, Mayor Lisa Anderson, our board here, Commissioner Wayne Hall, Commissioner Stuart Johnson, we would like to present you with a key to the city of Fairview. And Mark, if you would like to read the caption on this, that would be great.
Just few of the city, Kirby City, Roger and Holly Manley, who have shown amazing generosity and devotion to our city. They have subsequently provided subsidence for those in need, which will be immensely for the Shop With a Cop program.
Thank you.
Roger. Good to see y'all. Congratulations.
We're going to grab a picture, and anybody who would like to be in the picture, just come on in.
Come on, all the customers that's been here, come on up.
Anybody who wants to be in it, come on in. Thank you. We appreciate you guys so much. And happy retirement, and I hope you get some good Item number eight, staff comments and monthly reports. A, city manager comments. Mr. Darty.
Thank you, Mayor, board. I just wanted to announce that we have advertised for the special election coming up on January 11th. We have, it is on the website. Richard's going to be pushing it out on social media multiple times. We've also did an advertisement in the Main Street and the Observer. But I just wanted to, and I'm going to try to announce briefly at the meetings, just touch on times and dates, because I think that's the biggest thing when you have a special election, is people knowing about it.
I agree.
But voter registration deadline is Tuesday, December 12th. The office to be elected is an unexpired term commissioner seat, serving until November 2026. Early voting starts on December 27th and goes through January 6th. You can vote at Williamson County Election Commission from 8:00 to 4:30 during these times. Early voting in Fairview is at the Fairview Recreation Center. You can vote from 8:00 to 6:00 PM on January 5th and 8:00 to 12:00 PM on Saturday, January 6th. Election Day, you can vote here in Fairview at the Recreation Center from 8:00 to 6:00, or at the Williamson County Election Commission from 8:00 to 4:30. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions of Mr. Darty? Okay. Item number nine, consent agenda. Item 9A is minutes from November 16th, 2023, Board of Commissioner work session.
Moves approved.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item 9A passes 3-0. Item 9B, minutes from November 16th, 2023, Board of Commissioner regular meeting.
Moves approved.
Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item 9B passes 3-0. Item 10, old business, there is none tonight. Item 11, new business, A, Resolution 72-23, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract agreement between Journey Resurrection LLC and the city of Fairview, Tennessee, Richard Ross.
Yes, Mayor. This contract that you have before you is for our opening act for July the 3rd. Our opening act is Resurrection Journey Tribute Band. They're out of Franklin. One of their members actually lives out here. So, we're just trying to get all the artists locked in place for next year, just because all of their schedules are booking up really, really fast. I'm open to any questions that you may have.
I'm excited. I love Journey.
Moves for approval.
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item 11A passes 3-0. Item 11B, Resolution 73-23, a resolution calling for a public hearing on the proposed annexation of territory into the city of Fairview by owner consent with RS-40 zoning and approving a plan of services, 7857 and 7859 Crowcut Road, 10.07 plus or minus acres, map 018, parcel 026.10 and 026.04. I added this to the agenda.
Moves for approval.
Any discussion on this, or?
We're setting the public hearing. The, one of the property owners is here, and I believe he, do we know what date we're setting that for, if it passes?
Yes, sir. January 4th.
Fourth?
Say that again, January.
Patrick, can it be set out further? The property owner has requested January the 18th, because his, the father is in Florida, but he will be back on the 18th. Can we set it for that date?
Is this, I guess it's contiguous to Fairview's limits and it's inside the UGB?
It's inside the UGB.
I don't know why it couldn't be set out to January 18th.
Okay.
That is the date, correct, sir?
Especially if the landowner has requested it.
Yep.
All right. So, we'll set the public hearing for January 18th, then. Anything else?
Is that first reading?
This is first reading, and then we'll have public hearing and second reading on the 18th.
Okay. So, this is first reading tonight?
Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item 11B passes 3-0. Item 11C, first reading ordinance 2023-11, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Fairview, Tennessee by rezoning 4.35 acres of property located on 621 Highway 96, consisting of Williamson County tax map 022P, Group B, parcel 007.00, Commercial General CG to RM8 Multifamily Residential, property owner SM Commercial LLC. Is anyone here to represent that property?
Let's see if you have a city planner on here. Since he's not here, do you think we need to defer this?
With no representative and Ethan not available tonight, I would say that that would be pertinent.
For a next meeting?
Yes.
January cycle? That what you're wanting to do is defer to the January cycle?
If need be. I was just thinking maybe push it back.
December 21st.
December 21st.
Can we, is that long enough? Can we do that?
That's fine. If you're going to, if we're going to make a motion, just make a motion specifically to defer it.
I make a motion that we defer this item to the December 21st meeting.
Second.
And please let the property owner know.
Yeah, we have to have representation, really, here that night, so. Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item 11C, 3-0 for deferment. Item 11D, Resolution 75-23, a resolution authorizing the city manager to engage an engineering firm for design and engineering services of the perimeter trail bridge at Bowie Nature Park. I added this item.
Moves for approval.
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item 11D passes 3-0. Item 11E, Resolution 76-23, a resolution of the city of Fairview, Tennessee, to remove and relocate traffic control devices within the city of Fairview, Tennessee. I'm the one who added this item, so, not the planner. So, this should reflect that it was me that added it.
Commissioner Butler contacted me this week. He had concern, he couldn't be here tonight. He had concerns about this item, absent an engineer review to say which traffic signals should be removed.
We have a list.
And how they should be placed. He just wanted me to bring that to the attention tonight during the meeting.
Okay. I mean, we already have a list.
Mayor, is it on the list, is it anything other than stop signs or speed limit signs? Or is it anything that's electronic, or is it just?
Just some stop signs that will be removed and some stop signs that will be added.
Did Vice Mayor Butler understand that, or was he thinking it was?
I think his concern-
Traffic control devices, kind of, it made me think in red lights, but.
No, I think his concern was that we would be removing stop signs and/or adding other stop signs without an engineer's review and recommendation, you know, a traffic engineer reviewing and recommending it, instead of arbitrarily removing signs and then adding signs without an engineer looking at it and approving that plan.
It's my understanding that the former city manager just-
Yes.
-put some stop signs in areas that are now being asked to be removed. Now, I don't know that that's exactly the case, but that's what I've, that's what I've heard.
And that's what I understand as well. And it's not like a bunch of them. There's just a few. And we were contacted by Chris Butler, who, he's having some issues with a lot of speeding on, in Cumberland Estates. So, one of the signs was going to go up on the main street there to slow, you know, to-
Mayor, should we have a list of where they're going and ones we're taking up?
They're in the packet.
Sorry.
Yeah, there's only, I went four. I think there's four.
Yeah, it looks like one and three, you had one.
I had asked for a certain sign in where Chris Butler lives in Cumberland Estates, because I live two blocks up.
Yeah, so that's the one that's going to be added.
Yeah, that's one that I wanted myself personally.
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item 11E passes 3-0. Okay, item 11F has been removed until Ethan can be here to discuss it. And that leads us to item 11G. I'll read that one again.
Mayor, even though we approved the agenda with that item, I think it'd be best to defer it until the 21st also.
Defer what?
For F.
I move to defer F until the 21st.
Oh, I thought I was asked to remove it.
But it appears on the agenda, and it was advertised, and so I think since it's on the agenda tonight, I think the best way might be just to defer it, and that way we can put it on the 21st.
Okay. It makes no difference to me. I just was told to remove it, so that's-
I think it meets the same.
Okay.
We get to the same point.
So, item, yeah, item, so item F, are you, okay. Do we have a second on?
Second.
Okay. Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item 11F, 3-0 for deferring to, I'm sorry, did we say the next meeting?
December 21st.
Okay. Okay. December, okay, December 21st. Okay. And item 11G, Resolution 76-23, I'm sorry, 77-23, a resolution authorizing the city manager to engage an engineering firm for design and engineering services for parking spaces and a sidewalk at Triangle Historical Village.
Moves for approval.
Second.
Okay, just a little background on this. Dr. Neil Rice wrote a grant for the Triangle property. We've had several events there lately, really exciting. One is our own Fairview Community Theaters, being able to use that stage to put on plays for our community, which is awesome. We had our recent, just last week, had our Letters to Santa and Pictures with Santa, and Sean Carson came out and did our annual Christmas carol. So, it was a lot of fun. But we don't have adequate parking there. We need a sidewalk to the parking, handicap accessible. So, Dr. Neil Rice wrote a grant, and the grant was $60,000, and it was approved. So, no match. But it does have a quick timeline. So, we have to have everything completed by June, June 30th. So, that is the reason I added this to the agenda, so that we can get started. And when we have events out there, we won't have to park in mud, or ask the church across the way to allow us to park at their space and have people walk across. We'll have our own parking. So, I'm excited about that. Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. 11G passes 3-0. Okay, let's see. Okay, item 12 is roundtable with mayor and commissioners. Commissioner Hall?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, something I forgot on the engineering of the bridge at Bowie Park. Mr. Carter, is it possible that we could include a small bridge at the History Village at the same time? It's just a swell there that goes around Triangle School.
Have to take that up by a separate item.
Be a separate item, anyway.
Was it advertising or not, or?
Okay, I'll get that added to the next agenda, then. When will the engineering actually happen? Do you have any idea, Tom?
No, but I can, I can reach out to a firm, not tomorrow, next week.
Okay, all right. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Roger and Holly, thank y'all very much for everything y'all have done over the years. I couldn't even begin to fathom how many times you've sent food to funeral homes, including my grandfather's funeral, and I want to thank you for that
Roger and Holly, I haven't lived here as many as most, but I've lived here 30 years and have enjoyed many, many meals that I feel like were not priced adequately, way too low, in my opinion. You've always given to this community. The Thanksgiving meal that you did for City Hall, the employees and fire and police, that chicken dressing was out of this world, and if it's a secret, that's fine. But if it's not, I'd love to get that recipe, because it's probably the best I've ever had. And the Shop With a Cop program, everything that you have provided for that, and police and our community, we just appreciate you so much. I encourage everyone, you've only got till December 31st at 3:00, is that right, at 3:00 o'clock? 5?
1:45.
1:45, sorry. So, I encourage everyone, it's December 31st at 1:45, so before that, you know, take advantage of going and just giving them a big hug and telling them how much you appreciate them, because we sure do. We had a really nice Christmas parade. Was a little wet, but I was in a convertible, and I had the top down, so, you know, I didn't get soaked. But I, we had a great turnout, and a lot of people, you know, line the streets, and it was just so exciting to have a live parade back. We, every event that we've had this year is kind of a, you know, something we've brought back from the, you know, the history that we've done for so many years. Richard Ross has, and our staff, Richard Ross, a lot, has put a lot of effort into making these events just great for our community. We've been taking notes, and, you know, every year, we're just going to make it bigger and better, and, you know, include the horses next year. I've heard a lot about the horses, so we want to make sure that, you know, I know that in the, in the past, we always had horses in the parade. They just need to be at the back of the parade, you know, so. But anyway, it was, it was a great success, and I think everyone enjoyed it. It's so exciting to open the Triangle School back up and have events there, and, you know, people are so excited to see it. We have a lot of new people in our community that don't know the history of the Bowie Sisters and, you know, what they've given to this community. So, we'd like to keep that alive through the Triangle buildings, and that's exciting, too. So, I had a situation this week, well, a few days ago, and it made me, I've always appreciated fire and police, but it really made me appreciate even more. I got to get through this without getting emotional, but three days ago, my mother had a stroke and collapsed in her house, and I was out of town. And I was able to call, and the fire department and the police responded quickly. They busted in her door, because I'm the only one with a key, other than her, and got to her, and she's recovering in the hospital. She's paralyzed, but we'll get through that. But I appreciate- But I appreciate everything that y'all do, because without that happening, she wouldn't have made it. So, I just, I appreciate y'all so much. So, anyway, everybody have a great week. Our next meeting is December 21st of this year, and that'll be our last meeting of the year. So, we hope to see everyone again, and y'all have a great week. Entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.